Mr. Chairman Rivera, are you ready to start?
Good evening and welcome to February 16th Planning Commission Meeting. If you can all stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rosa Holloway.
Here.
John Delulo, and he has an unexcused absence this evening. Maria Carney.
Here.
Dr. Jeff Rivera.
Here.
Carmelo Aquindo.
Here.
Tabitha Rubin, and she has an unexcused absence for the record. Dawn Grigsby.
Present.
Roll call, Mr. Chairman, and Ms. Grigsby will be a voting member of the commission this evening.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to have the presentation of gifts and certificates by Councilmember Lynette Mahaney.
That is a long walk. So it's that time of year again when I get to come and thank you all for your service to the city of St. Cloud. I know it's been an unusual year this year, and so I appreciate your sacrifices even more than than usual, that you're willing to serve on this board. Being on the City Council, I know we appreciate your counsel and guidance when when items come before us, so I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you all, and I hope you continue to serve the city and do a fantastic job. And so we have some certificates and some wonderful gifts. Ms. Light is going to kind of help me hand those out, but thank you all again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yay, for beauty.
It's a pleasure.
Thank you very much. That's very kind, thank you very much.
At this time, do we have approval of the minutes from the November 17th meeting?
I motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion made by Mr. Aquindo, second by Ms. Holloway, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? The pass is five zero. First case tonight, DRC case number ordinance number CPA 20-00007-202101. Type of application, future land use map amendment, large scale.
Good evening, Melissa Dunklin, Planning and Zoning Manager. I'm going to request that we read the first three items all together, present them all together.
Okay.
If I could also, Ms. Duncan and members of the commission, there are some additional bits of information which I will hand out relative, excuse me, to agenda letters B and C, which relate to this presentation.
Okay. So the other two cases is DRC case number, ordinance number, PUD 20-0002-2021-02, which is the PUD Plan, Unit Development Zoning Map Amendment Preliminary Master Plan. And the third one is DRC case number PRK 21-0001, resolution number 2021-023R, Parking Determination.
I'll just give them a second to hand out the attachments. Thank you.
And a reminder, we have to vote on each one individually.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm hearing things. Okay, I think we're ready. Okay. Again, Melissa Dunklin, Planning and Zoning Manager. The case before you tonight is for a large-scale future land use amendment. The property is generally located near the intersection of South Narcusi Road and Lilian Lee Road. The applicant is requesting to change the future land use from low-density residential to commercial. The use is compatible with the surrounding area, and there are no adverse impacts to city facilities. The proposed request meets the intent for the strategic plan goal for growth management. DRC and staff have reviewed this request and recommends approval. As such, it is requested that the Planning Commission recommend approval of ordinance number 2021-01, based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code. The next case is for a zoning map amendment to establish a planned unit development and approve a preliminary master plan. The request is to change from the zoning from agriculture to planned unit development. The use is compatible with the surrounding area, and there will be no adverse impacts to city facilities. This is the proposed development program. They are proposing 104 townhome units, 320 multifamily units, and 24,720 square feet of retail commercial. The proposed request meets the intent of the strategic plan goals for growth management and economic development. DRC and staff have reviewed this item and recommends approval with the condition that they increase the multifamily parking spaces from 1.8 to 2 parking spaces per dwelling unit. There is a concurrent request for a reduction of parking that you will hear next. Okay. So this is the request to reduce the parking, and what is required right now on table 3-8 of the Land Development Code is 4.5 parking spaces per dwelling unit and an additional one space for every two dwelling units. And then for multifamily, the code requires two spaces per dwelling unit plus one additional space per 10 units. What the applicant is requesting is to reduce from four and a half parking spaces to three and a half parking spaces per dwelling unit. And then for the multifamily portion, they're requesting to reduce from two down to 1.8 dwelling units per acre. They did provide a parking demand analysis to accompany their request. This request meets the intent for the strategic plan goals for economic development and growth management. DRC and staff have reviewed this item and recommends approval with the condition that they increase the multifamily parking spaces from 1.8 to 2 parking spaces per dwelling unit. There is a concurrent request for a reduction of parking that you will hear next. Okay. So this is the request to reduce the parking, and what is required right now on table 3-8 of the Land Development Code is 4.5 parking spaces per dwelling unit and an additional one space for every two dwelling units. And then for multifamily, the code requires two spaces per dwelling unit plus one additional space per 10 units. What the applicant is requesting is to reduce from four and a half parking spaces to three and a half parking spaces per dwelling unit. And then for the multifamily portion, they're requesting to reduce from two down to 1.8 dwelling units per acre. They did provide a parking demand analysis to accompany their request. This request meets the intent for the strategic plan goals for economic development and growth management. DRC is recommending denial of the reduction to 1.8 spaces per dwelling unit. On the multifamily portion, we do support the request for the 3.5 parking spaces per dwelling unit for the single-family attached, which are for the townhome units. So likewise, we are requesting that Planning Commission approve this item with the condition that they increase their parking up to a minimum of two spaces per multifamily dwelling unit and the 3.5 parking spaces per townhome unit. And the applicant's agent is present here tonight, and she has a presentation that she would like to provide to you.
Ms. Duncan, if I could, just, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify for the commission, the condition you mentioned in the parking determination, item C, is that the same condition you referenced briefly in item B with regard to the preliminary, or is that a different?
Same condition. So without the increase of the parking spaces on the parking determination, we will not recommend approval for the previous.
Condition is the same for both of those items?
Correct.
If the other come up. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Tara Tedrow-Lowens Law, 215 North Iola Drive, Orlando, Florida, here on behalf of the applicant GSL Holdings. I'll try not to repeat too much of what you just heard from staff and what's indicated in the staff report, but this just gives you the overall location of where the property is. It's a total of 31.26 currently vacant acres. You can see from these maps, which were also included in the staff report, what the current zoning of the property is and the current future land use designation, which is agricultural on the zoning and low-density residential for the future land use. The development program that's outlined in our plan that was submitted before you tonight is a request for a comprehensive plan amendment to commercial with a concurrent rezoning to commercial PUD to allow for the proposed development program with 104 townhomes, 320 multifamily units, and up to 25,000 square feet of neighborhood commercial. We held two community meetings back in November with the surrounding HOAs and answered questions. Approximately 20 residents total participated in those. These maps just show you where some of the other similar density and intensity of development is located in relation to the project that's proposed before you tonight. You can see that there are some significant-sized multifamily, single-family, and mixed-use commercial developments in the nearby vicinity in Osceola County and surrounding areas. So certainly, the development program before you tonight is similar in keeping with that pattern of development, and as staff has indicated, is consistent with the comprehensive plan and meets the code requirements under the Land Development Code for the requested rezoning. Here's another overview and aerial map showing you a different angle of where all the other types of similar multifamily, single-family, and commercial development programs exist today, as well as the nearest intersection showing you where some of those other commercial developments are. So our request before you tonight is for the large-scale comprehensive plan amendment to permit it to be changed to commercial, and it would allow for up to 25 units per gross acre, but as proposed tonight, it's only 15.3 units per gross acre. Under the comprehensive plan and as outlined in the staff report, we meet the intent and the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan as it relates to a commercial future land use, including providing this type of commercial use along major corridors and neighborhood intersections, as well as promoting a master-planned community with a livable environment that has attractive, functional, environmentally safe, and pedestrian-friendly designs. In addition, the staff report findings also indicate that we provide for a greatly-needed innovative design and community development program along a major corridor that has a vibrant, progressive, and diverse community through collaborative planning, and so we would request approval consistent with staff's this evening. In addition, the rezoning request meets also the requirements under code by providing for a commercial PUD that allows for a mix of commercial and retail offices, and that's also going to be supportive of the residential program that we have in place. So what we've envisioned as part of our program is that we are going to have community-based commercial so that we can have a walkable, multimodal environment, so folks who live in our townhomes and in the apartments will be able to walk to some of those smaller community-supportive uses rather than having to drive further down the road, clog up our roadway networks. Instead, they can get some of those uses more adjacent to where they live. This is a PUD plan, this is also included, showing you where some of those overall areas of medium-density residential, high-density residential, and the commercial would be located on the property. I won't go over all these development standards in too fine of detail. If you have any questions on setbacks or building heights or anything like that, it's all included in the PUD plan, but I think the PUD plan has about a four-point font, so I just put that up here in case it was easier to read on our PowerPoint presentation. Also goes over some of those maximum building lot coverages and heights and setbacks, again, just the development program contemplated as part of our PUD. This shows you some of the non-residential uses that are contemplated as well. As I noted, those would be some of those supportive commercial neighborhood uses that would be an amenity to residents, not only within our development, but within surrounding developments as well. And this just shows you the open space standards. 25% is required, we're certainly providing that. The plans as they exist today for us actually exceed that requirement as well, and it's one of the reasons that we're requesting a waiver in parking so that we don't have to provide more asphalt on the property, and we can continue to provide instead increased open space and green space for things like amenities. This shows you the overall proposed master plan in color. It shows you where we have our access points onto South Narcusi, gives you the overall outline of where some of those units would exist in terms of the townhomes, the multifamily, as well as the commercial fronting South Narcusi as well. And this also provides for a safe and attractive pedestrian environment emphasizing accessibility. You can see on this plan that we have things like pedestrian trails, sidewalk systems to provide interconnectivity between our multifamily, our townhome, and our commercial uses. This just gives you sort of a design board showing the vision of the types of multifamily commercial, as well as our townhome aesthetics and architectural features that you could expect in the type of Class A luxury development that's contemplated for the subject property. I'm going to also talk a little bit about the parking demand analysis. So we spoke with staff today when we received their recommendations, so even though it is one determination tonight, as staff noted, there's two parts to it. One of those parts is really our request with regards to the unit count separated between multifamily and our townhomes. So we had a traffic study commissioned, as well as a parking study commissioned, that we submitted to staff. The traffic planning and design analysis that we received in January of this year kind of goes over what you would expect on a national average. So they looked at three of the major think tanks, nonprofit institutions, interdisciplinary groups nationally that give parking analysis for the exact types of uses that we're contemplating. You can see that under those types of analysis, the parking requirements under the city's code actually far exceed what any national averages would otherwise require. So while on one hand, we are okay with the 3.5, and staff has indicated they're also okay with that reduction, the two, the two spaces per unit on the multifamily is really above what you're seeing predominantly nationally. So you see that range from 1.66 with the average of 1.77. So we've proposed 1.8 as a sufficient amount of parking to meet the demand that we are going to have on our site for our multifamily units. But in addition, we've talked with staff today, and we've said, if staff is unwilling to provide a recommendation for approval to go below that two threshold, we're happy to try to meet in the middle and provide an additional 32 spots and have instead a 1.9 parking ratio rather than a full two ratio. Again, the intention is to try not to eat any more into the open space and the green space and recreational opportunities that we have in designing the subject property out, instead of having just a larger asphalt sea of parking around the units that we have contemplated. One other thing to consider that's supportive of staff's reduction of that 4.5 spaces, under your code in section 3.18.5, it doesn't really separate out single-car garage townhomes, so that was one of the reasons, is that it contemplates all townhomes having two garages, which really isn't the design nowadays. There are some townhomes that only have a one-car garage, but code requires that you have to be able to fit two cars in every garage, so for design purposes, that was one of the reasons that we were requesting the reduction to 3.5. And you can see that our summary conclusions that were in the report we received in January is that we would have 941 parking spaces with the ratio as shown below. Again, the ratio that we're proposing is above the national averages, is supported by the data of what multifamily units today are really requesting across the board. So of course, any multifamily developer is going to want to provide sufficient parking to be able to accommodate the needs of its residents. So we have an incentive to make sure that we've designed our project with that in mind. We want this to be an attractive place to live, and we certainly are not going to purposefully underpark a project, which is why when we commissioned that study, we were confident that it was going to support the findings that a two-point ratio was above what was necessary for the project contemplated this evening. So we do agree with staff on the 3.5 reduction, which they support that portion of our request, and we would ask for the opportunity, instead of a denial based on the 1.8 ratio, to increase it to a 1.9 parking ratio, which puts us close to what staff has recommended on that 2.0 parking ratio, but still allows us to, instead of having 32 more spots dedicated to asphalt in the parking lot, that we can continue to provide more additional opportunities for those walking trails, open space, and green space on our project. Certainly happy to answer any questions that you all may have specific to the project and any project details. We would appreciate a recommendation for approval for all of the requests that we've articulated tonight, and if we need to word it more particularly to make sure that any motions would be correct at the end, if it was going to be the 1.9 consideration rather than the recommended one from staff at two, we would appreciate a recommendation for approval on that front as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions from the commission?
I would like to ask, in your time, we spent a lot of time about parking. My question would be, in a bigger picture, how did the community respond when you had those meetings to another big, multiple-family dwelling on Narcusi Road again?
Sure, and I wasn't specifically at those community meetings. I think my, if any of my clients are in the audience tonight, if we have any specifics that they want to provide in terms of feedback from the community, if you want to come on up, they can give you that feedback. Certainly don't want to state anything on the record that wouldn't be perfectly in line with what happened.
State your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Isaiah Cottle. I live at 2916 Helen Avenue in Orlando, Florida, and we led those two meetings with the two A2As across the street, and we had, you know, about 20 citizens attend those meetings, and, you know, we answered general questions more than anything at all, and just kind of told them what we were planning, the timelines, and that was pretty much it. Did I answer your question?
I, you answered questions, what were their questions about? I guess my question is more about how do they feel about another larger multifamily complex coming onto Narcusi Road? Did they have questions about water, lighting, roads, you know, how is it going to impact the traffic, et cetera?
Sure, sure. Some of those things, yes. I think, you know, one specific thing was the traffic, which we addressed to them, that we had a preliminary traffic analysis, and it came back that Narcusi Road is adequately sized for a development of this type. We had questions about water pressure as well, and if there was anything that we could do about water pressure in the area, you know, and we had some general questions about, you know, how tall are the buildings, how is it, how close is it going to be to Turtle Creek, and those sorts of things. Any other questions while I'm up here?
I have a question. Most of these units, do you have a particular amount of bedroom sizes on these units?
Yeah, the, the unit mix is going to be approximately 40/40/20, probably a little bit less than that as far as three bedrooms, so that would be 40% one bedrooms, 40% two bedrooms, and 20% are less than three bedrooms.
Can you discuss what the money issue is? How much are they going to cost each unit?
You mean how much the rent will be?
Well, are they rentals, or are they to be bought?
Yeah, the multifamily portion, the apartment portion will be rentals.
Okay.
And they should average around $1.55 a square foot, so that would be about 1,400 a month, 1,500 a month, somewhere in that range.
Okay.
Yeah, market rate, that's right.
And who picked the design in front of it? Because this is Osceola County, more of a ranching look instead of just like?
Yeah, the design is very preliminary from an architectural and, and from that standpoint, very, very preliminary. You know, our townhome builder has this product, and it's currently built up in Sanford right now, and so that's the type of product that they wanted to bring here. If there are any specific comments on that, yeah, we'd love to address them.
Okay, thank you for your time.
If I may again, is the builder paying for some of the infrastructure and the things? Is there going to be a big impact on the city and what we have to cover for the, again, the roadways and lighting and those sort of things?
No, yeah, no, not at all. You know, there is a public right-of-way, but the home builder will be doing all of that construction for that public right-of-way. Like I said, Narcusi is properly sized for a development of this type. You know, it was recently expanded, and there's already turn lanes in. You know, we'll need to do a lift station on the property for sure from a sewer standpoint, but the water and sewer is present, as well as electricity along Narcusi Road, so.
And how did you address the, the comment about water pressure? Because I think that's been an ongoing comment along that corridor.
Right, right. Well, we need to get into the engineering portion of the project to really see what's going on there and see if there is anything that we can do to help that out.
Would a developer be able to impact that in any way?
You know, we just got to make sure, certainly that was a, something that we need to consider for our own development, and then we'll need to see what we can do as far as Narcusi Road. A lot of times, you know, you know, we certainly won't be going into their community and digging up their water lines or anything like that and replacing them, but if there's anything that we can do, we certainly will.
And I just, point of information, because I don't know, is, is that Toho water or city? What's, there's two that feed that out there, right? Does anyone know?
I believe it's, it's city, it's city water.
Isn't there like a certain cutoff on Narcusi Road where it's Toho, and then another portion is city?
Yeah, if it's city limits, it's city water, I'm pretty sure, isn't it, Jesse? That'd be a question for staff.
Yeah, if there's just.
All right, yeah, my understanding is that it's city.
Yes, it'll be city water.
And what, what department of law enforcement is going to answer to all those apartments? City of St. Cloud, the PD?
My, my understanding, it would be the city, absolutely. Absolutely, and with any development of this size, our impact fees are sized based on the scale of development and the number of units, and so we are contributing towards that.
Are they going to build like a substation out there? We're growing.
Right, that, that would be a question for, for your own police, I don't know.
And the fire department, too?
Exactly, we pay fire department impact fees as well, so that should help out from that standpoint.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna, I'm still more concerned about the bigger picture, but since you've spent so much time on the parking, if I may, so why the parking issue, and other than the green space, the reduction in parking, I mean, if it's multifamily units, and it's usually nowadays, everybody has a car, even, you know, when I was growing up, we didn't have one, we borrowed mom and dad's car, but now you've got like three, four cars per family, so is that going to be something that, I mean, I guess that's the developer's problem once it happens with the renters, but there just is so much intensity on the parking, so I just am curious about that.
Yeah, I can address that, absolutely. So, so these apartments are going to be, you know, Class A luxury apartments, and because of that, typically our demographics are young professionals and empty nesters. That's actually the two big points of the barbell that we see when it comes to apartments. In my career, I've developed about 5,000 units of apartments across Florida, Georgia, and Texas, and I'll tell you, I've never had one that was over two spaces per unit. In fact, I've had several underneath 1.8 spaces per unit. So I think, you know, this, St. Cloud, in this particular, you know, part of Narcusi, certainly there will be cars, but we believe that 1.9 spaces per unit will adequately address that.
I have one more question.
Sure.
The townhomes and the apartments, are they going to be spaced together, or how you're planning to put them?
Yeah, they are adjacent from each other, absolutely, and there will be some pedestrian access, biking access between the two parcels, the two subparcels of this property. You know, there, there really isn't a large buffer in between. Actually, we have a park on most of that buffer, or most of that area where they hit each other. There's a retention pond and also, you know, a path around that, that pond there.
One more. If there, as one of the slides showed, how much other development there is around there, is there no other development that is offering this same sort of, like you say, luxury apartment, empty nesters, et cetera, that, that is available now, or do we have a need for it? Is there a report that you all ran that says this is a great need in, in central Florida and St. Cloud?
Yeah, absolutely, and so every community to attract, you know, high-paying jobs, one of the things that you got to be able to provide is a diversity of housing options. And so when we looked at St. Cloud, the luxury apartment market, certainly anything new construction was, was missing in this market. Now, the growth is headed down Narcusi Road, which you all know very well.
Like, no.
And, yeah, and so, yeah, there's, there's definitely a need for it, certainly, you know, from a vacancy standpoint, apartments have done very well through COVID. You know, vacancies were not up tremendous. You know, vacancies were not up tremendously. Occupancy stayed pretty steady in the Orlando market. And as many, as much population that we're seeing move into this market as a whole, as well as Osceola County, as well as St. Cloud, there's certainly a market for it here.
And just a point of clarification, you say it's all rental?
The, the apartments are rental, so up to 320 units will be for rent. The 104 townhomes will be for sale product by a national home builder.
I think I'm done.
Any other questions? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
At this point, we're going to open up to the public. Does anybody wish to speak at this time? On any of the three issues? And we'll close it down to the public. You need to come to the podium and state your name and your address.
My name is Anthony Carrasco. I live 1830 Soldiers Pass here, right here in St. Cloud. Been a resident since 2010. A lot of my commute is into the Orlando area because of employment. I've taken Narcouzi Road since 2010, between the 417 and 528. To St. Cloud was about a 20-minute trip. And as it grows and they put more lights, it becomes more of an hour-plus just to get from 417 down to St. Cloud. So I've, I've noticed this. I, I've, I've used my stopwatch on my phone to time it when I get off the 417 or if I get off the 528. And from, from about, let's say if I get from five, I will get home about 5:30, 5:45. Now, if I get off that exit at five, I get home about 6:30, almost seven o'clock, so. With all this construction, it really is scary when it comes to traffic congestion. And of course, with all the construction, all the roadways get flooded with water when it comes to, when it rains and all that dirt and stuff, so it's happened. I myself got stuck on Narcouzi Road because of all the, all the water coming out of the construction zones. And it's been a hassle. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Sir, if you'd be, sir, if you could, if you could just fill out a form for our clerk.
Sure, I did throw one out.
You did? Oh, thank you very much.
I threw one out, and I also going to voice some opinions from where I live.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else would like to come up and speak? Well, at this point, we will close it down to the public and reopen it up to the commission. Any final thoughts, questions, comments?
I believe we should just keep it at the two spaces.
Yeah.
If you could, with these masks, it's important that everybody speak right clearly into the microphone so that it's, the public can hear, the clerk can hear, your attorney can hear, please.
Yeah, I believe we should keep it to the two spaces. I mean, they were asking for more, two spaces, with the concern that townhomes and the multifamilies are going to have more than one bedroom. So I think it'd be more adequate for the parking to have enough people instead of just trying to jump everybody else's parking, just to have adequate parking in the area.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, so we'll start a motion.
Well, if I could, just, Mr. Chairman, apologize. I would suggest you take each one of these items separately. So announcing the case number for A, and then call, if, if the commission's willing to move forward, doesn't need any further discussion, move forward A, B, and C in that order.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Is this subdivision going to have any swimming pool? Like Turtle Creek across the street has a pool.
This is a question for the developer?
Yep, sorry.
You have to, you have to open the public discussion again and bring the developer forward.
We'll open up to the public once again.
Thank you.
State your name and address for the record again.
Absolutely. My name is Isaiah Cottle. I live at 2916 Helen Avenue in Orlando, Florida. And yes, the, the apartments will have a pool. It'll be a luxury resort-style pool with, with lots of outdoor amenities. The townhomes currently are not contemplated with a pool. However, there is about an acre that we dedicated for a park. And then, you know, we're still talking with the home builder about the exact amenities that they want to have in that park. But there is some open space in addition to the trail around the pond as well.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
With the parking being at two, do you lose any of those amenities?
I'm sorry, say that again.
With the parking going to two, instead of the 1.8 you guys are requesting or 1.9, do you lose any of the amenities that you want to put on the green space?
Yes, there, there were a few very nice oak trees that we were hoping to save. You know, in the latest rendition, there was one that, that would have had to have been removed, going from 1.8 to 1.9. We've designed, you know, the site with a really large amount of open space and green space, which we really would like to keep. And so, you know, that's really where that extra parking is going to come from. It's going to come from the green space on the site.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's a really good point. I don't like a two-point anymore.
At this point, before I close to the public, anybody else want to speak on the public? And we'll close it to the public. Final thoughts from the commission before we take each item individually?
All right, so we'll vote on the first item. DRC case number, ordinance number CPA 20-00007, 2021-01. Future land use map amendment, large scale.
I make a motion to approve.
Is that based on the 16?
On the 16 findings within the Land Development Code. And the case number is 20-0007/2021/01.
We have to do the transmittal for this one, right?
Yes.
I will second the motion.
I have a motion by Ms. Holloway, second by Mr. Acuendo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Passes 5-0. Second case, DRC case number, ordinance number PUD 20-00002, 2021-02. Type of application, planned unit development zoning map amendment preliminary master plan. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Do I have to repeat it?
You, what you, what the commission will need is a motion clearly stating whether to recommend approval or denial. And the basis for, if, if you believe that the 16 findings have been met with regard to the...
I would like to make that motion, but do I need to read the whole thing again? Or just I agree to make that motion? Based on the 16 points?
Your motion is to approve based on 16 findings, item agenda?
Exactly.
B, okay.
I'll second it.
A motion made by Ms. Brigsby and a second.
By Ms. Carney.
By Ms. Carney, thank you. It's been a long day. What'd you say?
And just for clarification, the motion is dealing with the, the request for the consideration of the planned unit development and the approval of the preliminary master. It is not addressing any parking issue.
Correct.
Correct.
Only issue.
Is that correct, Ms. Brigsby?
I was under the impression we had to do them separately, so yes, that is correct, so, yes.
Just making clear off for the record.
Yes.
That's right. Okay, so.
All in favor?
Hold on, I think Ms. Duncan wants to address the commission on this. At the moment, there's a motion to approve to the consideration of the planned unit development and approval of the preliminary master. That motion by Ms. Brigsby has been seconded, correct?
Correct, correct.
Prior to taking a vote, Ms. Duncan would like to be heard.
Yes, I just wanted to point out that if you approve it as is, that will be with the 1.8 parking spaces. So you'll have to recommend approval with condition that they increase the parking spaces to two spaces per dwelling unit.
If I, if I could, Mr. Chairman, just for clarification from Ms. Duncan, the, the, the reason why the parking is dropping into this case as opposed to item C, item C is strictly on the parking determination.
Correct.
But it's because of the preliminary approval of the, of the preliminary master that that's impacting on the motion that envelops the parking.
Correct.
So I'm anticipating what the staff is recommending, or at least suggesting, is that the motion as currently seconded would approve a parking ratio that may not be cognizantly by this commission, what the commission is seeking to do. And it's coming up in item C. There were comments in the discussion about, I, I heard a couple of comments about wanting a two ratio and so forth, which I think Ms. Duncan is saying, if you approve the motion, which has been seconded at this point, that's going to be inadvertently adopted. Am I right on that, Ms. Duncan?
That is correct. So usually we swap the order, but staff, I'll take responsibility for that. Staff missed it. We should have put the parking determination ahead of the PUD.
Yeah, in this instance, you know, the motion has been seconded, so the vote will be taken. But as Ms. Duncan is stating, if the mo, if the motion is voted and succeeds and passes, there may be a parking determination issue that you didn't intend, so.
So my motion to, just for clarification, I did intend it because I'd rather save the tree than give the parking spot.
Okay, that's clarification.
So I want to make sure, that's why I did it that way. No offense to staff.
No, no, it's fine. I just wanted to clarify.
I'm glad you did, yes.
Okay, and that's, that's good clarification for whoever seconded the motion. That wasn't expressly stated in the motion, which is a good example of why those motions should be very expressed in terms of what's involved.
Yes.
And I feel the same position, save the green trees.
All right, so the motion from Ms. Brigsby was to adopt the consideration of the PUD and the approval of the preliminary master plan with the parking ratio contained in item B, which is...
1.8.
The, just for specificity, if you can just enunciate what that exact ratio is, so it's clear on the record what the, what the motion is contemplating, what's been seconded, what will be voted on.
Okay, so this would be approving 1.8 parking spaces per dwelling unit for the multifamily.
As the motion is currently standing and it has, has been seconded. Okay, just so everyone knows what's, what's been put forward.
Now we can vote?
You can either take a discussion before voting, or you can call for the vote. Commission's pleasure.
Guys want to say anything? Move on to a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those oppose?
Aye.
Have to vote. Who, who, who are the nays? Okay, so you got to say, Ms. Carney, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry. You have to verbally vote when you're called to vote.
So...
The motion fails.
Motion fails one to four.
Still need a recommendation?
Okay, I'm, I'm making a motion to approve the RA case 2021-02 with the exception of the parking spaces in the multifamily. And that would be two parking spaces per unit in the multifamily and the 3.5 in the townhomes.
I have a motion by Ms. Holloway.
I second it.
I have a second by Mr. Acuendo. All in favor?
Aye.
Those oppose?
Aye. Nay.
Passes four to one.
Ms. Carney, I'm sorry, did I hear you say you're in favor of the motion?
No.
So it was four in favor of that motion?
Yeah.
So just to confirm then, so the item agenda B was a four-to-one vote in favor of consideration of the PUD and approval of the preliminary master plan with the ratio of 3.5 parking for a townhome and...
Two.
Two.
For multifamily.
For the multifamily.
Yes.
Just making sure our clerk is receiving this. Did you get that, ma'am clerk? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And the next one. DRC case number PRK 21-00001, resolution 2021-023R, parking determination. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to approve subject to DR, the RA case 2021-023R for the parking spaces with the change to two parking spots for the multifamily and three and a half for the townhomes.
So it, it, just so to clarify before the motion is, is seconded, the, the motion deviates from what's been requested by the applicant.
Yeah.
So I think it's more appropriate that you would make a motion that would, or just to clarify, your motion is to deny what's been presented as, as applied for and that your recommendation be a differentiation. I think if you pose it in that fashion, it's more clear for the record.
Make a motion to deny as presented, the RA case 2021-023R, and make the recommendation of two parking spots for multifamily and three and a half for townhomes.
I second the motion.
I have a motion by Ms. Holloway, second Mr. Acuendo. All in favor?
Aye.
Those oppose?
Aye.
Four, one in favor of the motion. Ms. Carney, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I said, I said yes.
You're in favor of the motion?
Yes, I said yes.
So passes four to one. Thank you. Okay. That, that, just to clarify, that motion was to deny the parking determination as presented and instead recommend approval of the ratio of two for multifamily and 3.5 for townhome?
Yes.
Correct, okay.
Correct.
Just for the record, okay. Thank you very much.
Next case, DRC case number PUD 20-00001, ordinance number 2021-04. PUD amendment and revision to final master plan.
Good evening, Melissa Dunklin, Planning and Zoning Manager. This case before you is for a large-scale, I'm sorry, this, wrong page, sorry. And this case before you is for a PUD amendment and a revision to the final master plan. This property is approximately 19.69 acres and located generally west of Old Canoe Creek Road and east of the Florida's Turnpike. The applicant is requesting to change the currently approved PUD that was approved back in 2004. That included 909 residential units for tracks G and M. Originally, it was approved to have 264 condo units within those tracks. The amendment includes the addition of townhomes as a permitted use and a reduction to the LDC required parking spaces from 4.5 to 3.08 spaces per dwelling unit. This request will have no adverse impacts to city facilities. Here is just the visual representation of the tracks G and M. For track G, they are proposing 150 townhome units, and for track M, 48 townhome units. The proposed request meets the intent of the strategic plan goal for growth management. DRC and staff have reviewed this request and we recommend approval with the condition that they increase their parking spaces from 3.08 to 3.5 parking spaces per dwelling unit. As such, it is requested that Planning Commission approves this ordinance 2021-04 with the condition as shown there, which, to sum it up, basically is three and a half parking spaces per unit. This application is the concurrent parking determinant application, which is their request for a reduction in parking, similar to the last case. Currently, the Land Development Code in table 3-8 requires four and a half parking spaces per dwelling unit. The applicant is requesting to reduce the parking down to three parking spaces per dwelling unit. They also provided a parking demand analysis to accompany their request. The request is, meets the intent for the strategic plan goal for growth management. DRC and staff have reviewed this request and recommend denial of the request. DRC and staff have reviewed this request and recommend denial of the request to reduce the parking. However, we do recommend that if the applicant increases the parking to three and a half spaces per dwelling unit, that we approve it. The applicant is available, is in attendance and available for questions.
Thank you. Would the applicant have to come up and say a few words? State your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Brock Altaefer. I'm with Osceola Engineering, 1003 Florida Avenue, St. Cloud, and I'm representing the applicant tonight. I won't go into too much detail, but Anthem Park was originally designed and permitted, as Melissa had said, as roughly 900-unit subdivision. That was back in 2004. Most of the development was completed until the economic downturn of 2008 through 2012. So the development of these particular parcels was delayed. It should be noted that the infrastructure, the stormwater ponds, the amenities, the parks, the landscape, all that was designed originally for the 900-plus units. So that's all, that is all taken care of within the master development. Those elements are owned and maintained by the Community Development District in this area. These two parcels are subject to the Community Development District. They will pay those fees, so they will have access to those amenity features. The applicant is proposing to develop its 198 units. This was originally slated for 264, so this is a reduction in the overall units of what's proposed. The parking, when this was originally put together, the ratio that was approved was a little bit less than three per unit. We are proposing a little over three per unit with this application, but we have a parking study that has been prepared. We do have our traffic consultant here to go through some of the details of that if you'd like to hear it. But basically, the parking study showed that for this type of unit, two parking spaces per unit is adequate. This application that's been submitted does show three. We felt like that was, we didn't want to provide the absolute minimum, so we did provide slightly over three. We have heard staff's concerns, and at this point, we are willing to go with staff's recommendation of increasing the parking count up to 3.5. That may reduce in a slight reduction to the number of units that we're proposing, but we're willing to accept that and work with staff to come up with a plan that is acceptable. So if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission?
I guess my question is, is it only coming to us because there's a change in the amount of parking, because it was already approved before and you're going down? Is that why it's coming back?
So parking was never really fully addressed in the planned unit development previously, so what we would have to do is fall to code. So we'd fall to the new code, which, the parking code has been revised since this was originally designed and put together, and we just, we can't make that work based on today's parking standards, so that's why we're coming before you today.
So just for clarification, you guys are willing to come up to the 3.5 as being requested?
Yes, sir, we are.
And I'd love to hear what the traffic person has to say.
State your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mohammed Abdullah, Traffic and Mobility Consultants, 3101 Maguire Boulevard, Suite 265 Orlando. Commissioners, we conducted the parking study here, and we did it in three parts. So we looked at the city's parking code and compared it to central Florida cities, similar size, and their parking codes and what they require. We also looked at the national studies and the national averages as published in the Institute of Traffic Engineers, Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE, and they publish basically data from all over the country for similar uses, and looked at their, the code, the parking rate that they recommend. And also, we looked at actual four other townhome sites here in the city of St. Cloud and observed their parking demand. So it was a pretty intensive review. The results were most of the parking codes around you, Apopka, Okoye, Kissimmee, City of Orlando, so on and so forth. Most of the cities here in central Florida are requiring more or less two parking spaces per unit for townhome development. They typically see it as one in the garage, one on the driveway, or two on, you know, whichever mixture you want to have. Apopka, I believe, adds another 10% of whatever parking number you have as visitor parking in addition. So in that sense, your code is pretty aggressive compared to the neighbors. Then when we looked at ITE, the range there was between 1 point, let me not get this wrong, 1 point, what was it, on the low end, it was 1.2 on the low end, which is quite low, probably more urban, and 2.3 on the high end, which is typically suburban. So that was the range that they recommended, depending on the setting that you're in. Then when we did the observations at the four other developments, similar townhome developments, ranging in size from 38 on the lower end and 91 units on the higher end, we found that the parking demand, what they were, you know, how many parking spaces are being used, and the way we did that is, we basically had people driving around and observing how many parking spaces are being used. Because we can't see into the garages, we assume the garages are full. Most likely, they're not full, but we took a conservative assumption and assumed that they're full. With that study, we found that the average rate of, the average demand is 1.82 parking spaces per unit, so 1.8 parking spaces per unit, still under two parking spaces per unit. This supply, on average, those four developments, how many parking spaces they have is about three parking spaces per unit. So they have more parking than they needed, so there was a lot of asphalt that wasn't being used. You know, in our world, we like green and not blacktop, so that's why these parking reductions make sense for these types of uses, so that you're not overparking it, causing more runoff, causing, you know, more heat and so forth. So for that, we recommended, we had actually initially recommended anywhere between two and three. The applicant went ahead and supplied a little bit more than three for this development. Any questions?
So you made a new study of the parking traffic, but not the study of the traffic on Canoe Creek.
Well, we, yeah, because this was an approved development, there's, it was already, the traffic study, if you will, was already baked into the city's plans. It was previously approved.
No other questions?
And that was approved in 2004?
Brock? Yes, the original PUD ordinance, I've got that here. I believe it was a 2004 date.
That's a couple of years.
Yes, it was ordinance 2021-04. I'm sorry, that's this one. Yes, it was 2004. It was ordinance number 2004-32 for your reference.
Well, thank you. We'll open it up to the public at this time. Please state your name and address for the record, and if you haven't filled out one of the green slips when you're done.
I did fill out a card. My name is Harold Ellens, 1841 Remembrance Avenue in the community in question. I have 96 signatures on a petition to request that this commission deny their request for variance in parking. Let me tell you a little bit about the community. Even though we've got over, well, let me, about 50%, this is my rough math, of the community uses their garage for storage. I'm originally from up north, that just astounds me, but it's the fact. But what that means is more people park in the driveways and on the street. In fact, when we have cars parked on both sides of the streets, the width of the street, when it was originally designed, was narrowed because of the building, builder request, which means, again, when cars are parked on both sides of the street, emergency vehicles can't get down the street. And there's not enough parking on the street such that your neighbor is going to park, more than likely, in front of your mailbox, so letters and mail can't get delivered. So I would ask that we not perpetuate this problem by limiting the number of parking spaces in these other areas. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony?
You need to give it to Jesse.
I have an Anthony Carrasco. State your name and address for the record again.
Anthony Carrasco, 1830 Soldiers Pass. I'm right on the corner of where their development is, where they're looking to build the development at. Just to kind of piggyback off of what the gentleman said, I, on my street, did have emergency vehicles, because of the both sides parking, was unable to get past. And a result, we did have a neighbor that, basically, did not make it to the hospital because of being in the way. Not only that, like you said, the garage, I come from up north too, my garage is packed. The average, actually, parking, the average household back home is literally about three to four cars per house. So there is, how can you say, there is a need to have more parking spaces, especially in that community. It is very important that it doesn't really get too congested from where I live. On top of that, my kids attend a school that's there. So between the construction, between the additional residents, you know, it is taking a toll on, you know, as far as like, my kids going to school, having more cars, and, you know, having more construction there, you know, I'm just worried about safety-wise, that's about it, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else from the public? Come on up, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Alex Martinez. I live in 1881 Centennial Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. One of the concerns that we have with this development is that besides traffic, we do have a school in our community. We have Neptune Elementary School, and one of the biggest problems that we have is traffic and our kids walking from home to school and vice versa. Another issue that we have is that this community will be right in front of the school, so that's going to create a situation for our kids also. And also, we would love for the applicant to also have meetings with our community so we could know more about this development, because even though this was approved in 2004, a lot has changed, and we would love to hear, you know, us as a community members to have a voice and to talk to them. We haven't had that opportunity yet. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to speak?
I'm sorry.
State your name and address again.
I missed, my name Harold Ellens, 1841 Remembrance Avenue. Missed one other point of interest perhaps, related, is that the Orange Grove right next door, just across the fence line from the track G that we're considering. Last time I was at City Hall, they talked about dumping that into Betty Ross, which is the road that runs right here. And if you have 900 units, assuming each of those units have two cars, that's 1,800 cars, with only one point of egress right now, and that's at Sergeant Graham Road. If they put another, I understand their interest to put another, give them another egress, but the volume of traffic that's going to be coming through there and down our road Lexington is going to be incredible. If you've got these 296, I'm sorry, 196, 98, 98 units here, again, assume two cars per, some will have more, some will have less, and then you add in the other 900-plus units on the Orange Grove, all this coming through Lexington, I don't know what the answer is, frankly, but the volume, we can't just pile things on and assume that it'll work its way out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, Brock Altaefer, Osceola Engineering. Those were some very good points that the residents have brought up. I would like to go through and address them. The first item that was brought up is that there's too much parking, or there's not enough parking, there's too many cars in the existing community. If you look at the site plans for what we've provided, these new communities are going to be almost completely separate, completely isolated from the existing communities. There's no reason for our parking to intermingle with the parking of the existing residents. We're separated by a major boulevard, and there's really no reason to park and walk like that. The other issue is the, it's an operational issue that you see in a lot of communities. People park on both sides of the streets and they reduce the emergency vehicle access. What many people are doing is HOA regulations are forcing people to park on one side of the street. It's an issue that can be resolved by the HOA, but we have no ability to do that. That's something that they would need to take care of on their own. And we have seen many communities that are taking that step. The issue of three to four cars per home, that's very likely in very large homes, and a lot of the Anthem Park homes are pretty large homes. These are going to range between 1,300 square feet and 1,500 square feet, and they're going to be three bedrooms. So these are intended for first-time home buyers. These are intended for people with either no children or small children, and for kind of the move-down market. So while that is a concern in the majority of Anthem Park, we do not see that being a concern in this segment. This unit just does not market itself to that type of parking situation. The last issue, I wasn't exactly sure about the Orange Grove. Is that, is that the property to the north?
Yeah, it's northwest of Narbusi and Old Industry, right on the corner, there's across from the car wash.
It's what's fronting Neptune Road.
It's Neptune, Neptune and Canoe.
Okay, I guess I don't see how we have anything to do with that one, I'm not sure. I haven't seen that plan, so I don't see how they mix.
If that is not your property, then you don't have no say-so on that.
Correct. So if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
I guess my question would be, one of them, they said that they, the residents would like to speak with the developers, is that something that could happen?
So we did reach out to the Community Development District, and we have had conversations with them. It sounds like we need to have a conversation with the HOA as well, which I was lucky enough to meet the HOA president here tonight, and I did share some of our ideas with him. So that's definitely something that we can do.
Any other questions?
Well, I guess also, aren't there sidewalks in the community?
There are sidewalks in the community right now, and we would only be increasing the amount of sidewalks as part of our development.
Okay, so from, yeah, from the school standpoint, that's, you know, something, hopefully, people are using sidewalks. And then also, wouldn't it be, again, not only the HOA, but would it also be city? I mean, if people were parking on two sides, right, the HOA might have a rule, but wouldn't that also be, I mean, you can't park, I mean, technically, in St. Cloud, you can't park the wrong way on a certain side of the street. If you're going down on the right, you're not allowed to park that's facing this way. So maybe it's just, again, something that has to be bubbled up, I guess is my question to, you know, because that's a really serious thing about the emergency vehicles, so I guess I don't know if that's something we can recommend to the city or not, if that's a problem.
What we've seen to solve that is the HOAs will hire off-duty officers to monitor that. It is a strain on the city if they were to go out and monitor every local road everywhere. So that's been how it's resolved in other communities.
A few high-priced tickets, might take a pair of that, but...
But it could also be the HOA getting with the city to place no parking signs on one side of the street. But it would be up to the HOA to make that recommendation or that request to the city.
That's how we've seen it in other communities, correct?
And again, a point of information, if, in 2004, regardless of how long ago it was, if that development was approved, there's, it's not for this commissioner or anyone to be questioning it again. if that development was approved, it's not for this commissioner or anyone to be questioning it again. And no disrespect to anybody, it's just, that's just the way that it works, right? If there's something going on or a concern from that, that's definitely not something that this commission can address.
That's part of the history of the project overall, but it's, you're not going to be able to take any action with regard to that action.
Okay.
2004. But to your earlier point, the commission, in your feedback as an advisory commission, in your recommendation to the council, in whatever direction that would be, you're certainly able to, as a collective body, add your own recommendations or details if you have suggestions that should be considered by council in moving the matter forward. I think you mentioned, or I think you asked that question a moment ago.
I definitely did. How would I go about bubbling that up and having that be something that they?
Well, it would be usually contained in a motion.
All right.
Okay, and then if the commission is in agreement in a majority feature, it would move on and be part of the record as part of the motion.
At another point in time or at this point in time?
No, at the time when the chair has called for a motion.
Got you, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, at this point, I'll close it to the public. Go ahead, state your name and address for the record.
Harold Ellens, 1841 Remembrance Avenue. There are three HOAs in our community currently. With this new building, there will be a fourth, as we understand it. I have not met this gentleman. I happen to be the president of the master HOA, which is all the single home dwellings. We have had an ongoing discussion with the city. The city owns the streets. We don't own them. We can't restrict people from parking on the street. Not our jurisdiction, we can't do anything about it. So we have approached, we've done a lot to approach the city and gotten nowhere. So that parking spot, even though it sounds great on paper, is not an easy fix. And even though this is a separate plats that don't interlace with ours, which is true, we don't want them to face the same emergency vehicle issue that we have currently. We care about them, right? And we care about the congestion. We're not asking to stop the development. We're just asking to maintain the the parking requirements as they currently stand. They were put in place for a reason. We ask that we not make an exception. Thank you.
Any final thoughts?
Yeah, just one last thing. I would like to remind you that we are in agreement with staff's recommendation, which is revising our plan, going above the three parking spaces per unit that we proposed, and providing the three and a half as staff has recommended. So that's what we're seeking approval of tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, as in the last batch of cases, that becomes relevant as the parking is touched upon in both of the agenda items. So it's important that that be recognized in your collective discussions or whatever motion's going to come forward. The aspect of the parking with regard to the?
Yeah. I move for a denial.
Well, before we move forward, the chairman's going to close the public hearing and then call for discussion or for a motion, exactly.
At this point, we'll be closing to the public. Any final thoughts from the commission? If none, then do I have a motion?
Yes, I move for a denial as presented on ordinance number 2021-04 with the subject to a change for the parking to 3.5 parking spaces per unit.
So that's the recommendation?
It's a recommendation, correct.
Okay, so the motion is to deny the consideration of the PUD amendment to the revision for the final master for, well, is the denial with regard to the parking component?
The denial is in regards to the parking component, and that is to be changed to 3.5. Everything else is fine.
Is you, okay, based on the land development codes?
Yes.
Factors?
Yeah.
So if you understand the motion, the motion was, can be viewed two different ways, but the motion was to deny as proposed based upon the parking ratio and instead recommending approval of the PUD amendment and revision to the final master, but with the recommendation that the parking ratio be to 3.5.
Correct.
I have a motion, but Ms. Holloway, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion the way that she stated it.
I have a second by Mr. Cuendo. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes 5-0.
We have one more agenda item for that.
Yes, the next case, DRC case number PRK 20-00001, resolution number 2021-014R. Type of application, parking determination. Pretty much.
I'll open it up to the public? No?
Same one.
Same one?
Yeah.
I motion to deny it the way it stands at the 3.8 parking and motion to approve it at 3.5.
I second.
So you have a motion by Mr. Cuendo, second by Ms. Holloway. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes 5-0.
Just for confirmation for the record, so this is in resolution 2021-014R is that motion. And the motion mirrors that of the previous agenda item, which was to recommend denial of the parking determination, application as submitted, but agree with staff's 3.5 ratio accepted by the applicant as a recommended approval to the council.
Correct.
Correct.
And that's what's been passed. All right.
Next case, DRC case number, ordinance number CPA 20-00008, 2021-06. Type of application, future land use map amendment, large scale.
Good evening. The next two items go together, so if you could read them both, I'll present them both at the same time, please.
Sure. In addition to that first item, second item, DRC case number, ordinance number ZMA 20-00008, 2021-07. Type of application, zoning map amendment.
Okay. The case before you is for a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use for the Osceola County Road and Bridge Facility. The subject property is approximately 16.36 acres and is generally located east of the Florida's Turnpike and west of Old Canoe Creek Road. The applicant is requesting to change the land use from medium-density residential to public-institutional. This request is compatible with the surrounding area and will have no adverse impacts to city facilities. This request meets the intent for the strategic plan goal for growth management. DRC and staff have reviewed this application and recommend approval of ordinance 2021-06. As such, it is requested that you approve ordinance number 2021-06 and transmit to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for inter-agency review based on the 16 findings. This next case is the concurrent zoning map amendment for the Osceola County Road and Bridge Facility. The request is to change the zoning from PUD to professional. The proposed request is compatible with the surrounding area and will have no adverse impacts to city facilities. The request meets the intent for the strategic plan goal for growth management. DRC and staff have reviewed this request and recommend approval of ordinance number 2021-07. Likewise, it is requested that the Planning Commission recommend approval of ordinance number 2021-07 based on the 16 findings within the land development code. The applicant is present here and available for any questions.
You got to come up. State your name and address for the record.
Walter Crujack, 6174 Oakshore Drive, St. Cloud, Florida. The applicant, on behalf of the BLCC, we thank you for your time for considering our request this afternoon or this evening. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them for you.
Thank you.
What do they want to put there?
We started off wanting to put a new mosquito control building there.
Thank you, thank you.
I said we started off putting a new mosquito control building there, so we went through the site development plan application with the city. And the city said we couldn't do it because we were zoned, our zoning wasn't compatible. And we're also in the midst of master planning the whole site.
So it's really, it's really community help. I mean, I don't know what to say, whether like mosquito control, it's not, we're not putting in another apartment complex on that street. It's, you're not going to take down the pet, you're not going to take down the kennel, the dog pound or anything?
Animal control.
Animal control, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
So are you moving Road and Bridge to where?
We're not moving it. We're not moving it. We've owned, I'm unsure when we actually purchased the main part of Road and Bridge that's there. This particular piece, I believe we purchased it in 2007. I think at the time it had that zoning, nobody ever noticed it. And we've just gone this long till we wanted to build the building on it, and everybody discovered it, so we're just trying to make it right.
Oh, it's just a zoning thing from residential density, medium-density residential to what you can use it for.
It'd be consistent with what we have next door.
I'm all about that.
I mean, you've been using it all along.
No.
So you're just, you're just getting legal.
As long as I don't want to put a big bunch of apartments in there, I'm happy.
Yeah, when I saw it, I went, whoa. I said, who would have known that, but.
Any other questions? I'll open it up to the public. Any public comments? Don't see any. Close it. Close it to the public.
My only comment is, please take care of those mosquitoes.
There's no final thoughts from the commission? Do I have a motion? For DRC case number, ordinance number CPA 20-00008, 2021-06, the future land use map amendment, large scale.
I motion to change it from future land use to large scale to meet for the public institutional.
And to transmit.
I second.
I have a motion by Mr. Cuendo, second by Ms. Holloway. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next ordinance that goes with it, DRC case number 0ZMA 20-00008, 2021-07, zoning map amendment. Do we have a motion?
I motion to approve the recommendation, to approve ordinance number 2021-07 based on 16 findings within the land development code.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Cuendo, second by Ms. Holloway. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes 5-0. And I believe that's it.
Oh.
Go ahead.
When can I do a motion that the city or somebody look at that subdivision and the traffic pattern or the parking?
Okay, I'm sorry, we're talking about a case that we've just heard?
Well, it doesn't seem like it relates to any of those. It was just the issues that were brought up by the public.
This is just feedback from commission to staff?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, guide me along. I'm all ears. But is this the appropriate time?
Sure.
Okay.
If the chairman, the chairman would ask if there's anything further from the commission, certainly.
Anything further from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we recommend to staff to look into the parking and signage and traffic flow issues of Anthem Park as it applies to their future growth.
I think it can be done in the form of just general feedback for staff to consider, maybe report back in an informal way. There's nothing before the commission specifically addressing that project.
So it doesn't have to be a motion, it can just be a recommendation?
Correct, it could just be a request.
I changed that to a recommendation that they would.
Really, it's a request that staff could report back on, you know, an area of the city that you had a certain concern of with a certain aspect, just for their feedback, for general discussion.
Yeah, but it's really, it comes down to their HOAs and the residents. They need to go around with some signatures to request for the city to change the parking on the street to one-side parking. It's, you know, it's really up to them to request that.
And I agree, but when you hear somebody say, I've gone to the city and not doing anything, I feel there's a little responsibility to just bubble it up and ask that maybe they're asking the wrong folks or they're just not asking appropriately. How do we help that, if anything, so? I mean, maybe it is just that staff might reach out to the HOAs, and trust me, I've worked for a company that had eight HOAs in one complex out by Disney, so I know how difficult that can be to corral the cats. But just, again, a recommendation that we heard it, so we, I think, should just pass it on. Don't know if we can help any or not, but communication is the key to success.
Well, don't forget also, you know, as members of the community, you can make your thoughts known just in a general fashion. If you're looking for feedback about a particular project or property, the best way to do that is right here by just a general request about if the staff can inform the commission about a particular issue that you think is at least worthy of some discussion outside of the confines of a otherwise.
I understand and I hear you very loud and clear, but I think sometimes I want to just help, remind everybody that when you sit back here and you do that, when you sit out there, it is very scary and you don't necessarily always feel heard. So I heard something that, since I am sitting here, I just would like to, you get heard a little bit more when you're on a commission or your committee, et cetera. So that's all I'm just suggesting, so I don't know how to go about it, but I feel very strongly about it.
Yeah, I think I'm just, I think staff is hearing you loud and clear, and they'll be able to keep you informed.
Perfect, that's all I can ask.
Sure.
And you're right, everybody does have a responsibility, but I felt like they gathered 96 signatures. He said he felt like it fell on deaf ears. He just might be talking to the wrong folks, and he needs guidance. And that's, that's half the time. We get the right people, the city, great things happen. I mean, I've lived here for 50 years. I know that you have to sometimes be a little bit squeaky wheel until you get the right person. So, thank you.
Any further thoughts? Well, bearing none. Have a good night.
Night, y'all.